Okay, welcome Meramec. Tonight is the April 21st, 2025, meeting of the Meramec Villas District Board of Commissioners. As usual, you can go on the MBD website, which is MBWater.org, and download any meeting agenda for these meetings. And it has a Zoom link on there that you can click on and join us via Zoom, or a phone number that you can call and enter a webinar ID number and have access by telephone. As a courtesy, Meramec TV is also recording these meetings, and will be posted at a website, on their website, at a later date. So at this time, I'll ask everybody to rise, you know, Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Meeting to order at 5:02. And first item on the agenda, well, we have a full board. New Commissioner, Mr. Allen here, who's just got elected in the last annual meeting. So the rest of us are still the same as before, and all five of us are present. Superintendent Ron Minor is excused for tonight's meeting. But the first item on the agenda here is, or on the health and, I mean, sorry, Finance and Human Resources Review with Kristin Mar.
Thank you. Closing out the month of March, we are seventy-five percent through the year. Three months remaining in this year 2025. Currently, our revenue is sitting at $5.3 million, expenses at $3.4 million, with a net ordinary income of roughly $1.9 million. We still do have two more loan payments through the end of the year, that's roughly a million dollars. The very first payment of our two, three, two, nine, seven, and eight new fast loan will be made in June. In terms of revenue, nothing really has changed. We still have high interest rates. We have to take advantage of service lines for the new mains that are going in, and a lot of new entrance fees for the new construction going on. In terms of expenses, purchase of water and filtration, we have kind of capped those with what's going in the budget. We are now nearing the end in potentially moving some of that from below the line to above the line. Again, we have three more months to decide, but I think we will be healthy enough to be able to do that and not take out of capital reserves. We also have new construction that for the entrance in the mirrors has significantly over budget, but that's been offset by the revenue that we're getting from the entrance fees. Any questions on specific accounts for budget versus actual?
What, do you have any questions on any of that?
Page seven of the financials are fund balance. Our underside net position right now is roughly $22 million. That is with five million being actual cash. We still have actual cash to fund balances twenty percent, and percent of total considered of fund balance is sixty-three point nine percent. We do not have the audit adjustments for 2025 yet, which OPEB is one of the adjustments that tend to fluctuate a lot. That's your deferred inflow and outflow of benefits from NHRS. Those are a calculation that they come up with to determine what our future balance or proportion of NHRS is. That will be when we do our audit. But the other balances are very healthy, seventy-five percent through the year. Any questions on fund balance? Last one activity, page eight. We have the highlighted items in yellow in the far right corner. Those are the items that we had envisioned we need to take out of capital reserves. As I just mentioned, I have a feeling we'll be able to bring that into the budget without any significant issue.
The only, the only question I have with that is, at least the penny check contract is a multi-year agreement, right?
Correct. This is, this is year, it's really like two point eight of a three point two year contract.
So you're proposing not to take the full three point two year contract price out of it, so but only what's?
This is just this year's portion.
It's a pick of for this year only. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I have adjusted some of the items from equipment and facilities. You'll notice that I did add in what was just voted on from the annual meeting. Those checks have been cut to be put into the trust with eight hundred thousand for equipment, the sixty-eight thousand for system development, and the two hundred thousand for water purchase and water treatment O and M. We also had some, a few more to be determined. Just kind of putting there as a holding place with our lead service line. We have gotten grants just in case we go over and anything that might need to be done for that. Along with the areas three and four and five, we again got another grant to cover those. Go over, kind of a placeholder for those. Any questions with those? Reports are your normal month review, profit and loss. And I'll look at like the March year-over-year from this year to last year. Any questions on any of those?
Everybody good with those? I think it's the last item here, Kristin, is the authorization, delegation of payroll process.
Yes, so what you had in your packet. Why are item six of that, which is the payroll manifest, if we're off payroll processes, the previous board meeting will be presented to the Board of Commissioners at the end of each month for review, and then it also said for and approval. So just taking those two words out. You've already pretty much delegated, you do everything else. You guys, you won't have the opportunity to review them. They'll just be up on the website that we have. For any, so I have that with the correct names and the dates for you to sign before you leave today, and I'll just leave this over here.
Do you want to run that through quick so we don't forget? And Lynn is on board with this?
Lynn is on board with this. Once you sign it, I'll scan it and have her sign it through after you sign.
I say, I don't know if everyone went in online and was able to access these reports. If, I know there's a couple of different links that we're going to now.
There are three links now, correct? So there is all of the documents for your review. There is now a draft meeting minutes link for Jill to use for meeting minutes. Once they're approved and voted on, they'll go to the documents page. And then there was one for tie cards, that was internal.
Yeah, so if anybody has any problems accessing that, just reach out to Kristin.
Yes, let me know.
I think we, um.
I think we figured out our ones.
It's very helpful. It's good. I like the way it's set up.
For some reason, I can't access the one. It gives me four or four error.
I'm trying to actually delete it because it's not used for anything.
Right.
Block five is trying to work with me to get that done. So I have deleted it, which is why it shows up, but then brings you nowhere.
That's what I figured. Right, okay. So it's not, okay, good.
So the old OneDrive link, there's nothing in there anymore? Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. I checked. I didn't see anything, so that's good as well.
Anything else that you think of that you would like to see on there? I mean, I kind of put everything that I would think, like the audits, the payments, our rate schedules. So you can see, if you want further history, let me know, I can do. I started basically from 2025 forward, but if you want older history, I could put that on too.
Yeah. So I know on the Board of Commissioners packets on that site, there's one folder. I think it's dated, should have been twenty-four, it's dated twenty-five, like November twenty-five. So it's not, I think that, just change the folder name and.
She's putting fiscal year?
No, it was the Board of Commissioners packets, I think is what it was. I'll just check because it stands out. It's the only one that's past our actual date, present date. And to get them to order the correct way, I would suggest if you want to make, I don't know if you have it set up by.
It's whatever you touched last.
Year.
Does.
It doesn't do it alphabetically or anything?
Whatever you touched last.
Because that's, really?
If you go above and click, you can sort it.
Yeah.
But if you just go in, it's going to, what comes to the top or the bottom will be whatever you touched last. But if you click on, if you want to sort by the name or the date or whatever.
I thought the dates were out of range because like when you're using like, like the month one for January, and then when you go into like, you know, ten or something, it doesn't come out like in order. So if you just use a zero, one, and then, you know.
Yeah, for example, no, for example, BOC, BOC packet one dash twenty-seven dash twenty-five, if you say one, zero, one dash twenty-seven, twenty-five, because it does numeric sorting.
Right.
So we usually do the year and then the month and then the date if it's a date specific.
Well, these, these folders are CPEC.
That's how I put those in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we have to match our numbers.
Are, yeah. Yeah, because he's looking at it there and.
And which one is the one that?
November follows January because it's one, 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 you know.
It sorts the one before the eleven.
Right. Which it just makes it easier when you're looking for a particular date, if it's in order like that.
You would have to do reverse, like year, month, date.
Which is, and it will sort confusing the zero, correct?
Yeah.
Which one is the one you think is wrong?
Um, that one, eleven eighteen twenty-five.
Uh-huh, and that should be twenty-four, okay. BOC packet eleven dash eighteen dash twenty-five should be.
Should be twenty-four, I think. But other than that, it's all good to be all together in one spot. It works. All right, so this brings us into the regular session, which we're going to start by assigning the different positions in the Commissioners. So I guess the first one will start with the Chair of the Board, and I guess I'll offer or to take any recommendations where I'm looking for.
Nominations.
Nominations. For a Chair of the Board of Commissioners.
I'll nominate Dawn to continue as Chair. You'd like to?
I like to be seconded, right? So nomination by Scott.
I'll second.
Second by Wolf.
You're not that bad.
It's a fun time. Um, I think the, the correct order is to ask if there's any other different nominations at this point. Which if I don't, I don't hear any, then I guess we can.
No. Let's check.
All right, so the other.
I'm going to get his feet wet for you.
Yeah.
Just start.
With no other nominations, I guess we'll put that to a vote. I guess all in favor of myself as Chair, I think I'll abstain. But for all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that's good. That's four, zero, one with myself abstaining. So moving on to the next position of Vice Chair for the Board of Commissioners.
I have a nomination for Erin.
I didn't do anything wrong.
I think, I think that would be great. I mean, he's usually here anyway, so it kind of sucks to view them. Makes a little bit of point, but no, I think it would be great.
Yeah, a nomination for Erin. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Dan. Are there any other nominations for anyone else for Vice Chair? Seeing none, then we'll put Erin's nomination to a vote. All those in favor of Erin Clement for Vice Chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that's four, zero, one. Are you abstaining with Erin abstaining? I don't think we need to abstain, but I don't know, just whatever you want to do. And the last position is the Personnel Liaison. Do I hear a nomination for a Commissioner for Personnel Liaison?
No. What? You sure you don't? You'll take it?
Sure.
Okay, I, I do nominate Scott. I think would be, I've been doing this, I think, like for three or four years now, so. I think, I don't know, when, when Joe dropped out, I think it'd be good to.
Been a while.
I think it would be good to, to get some fresh eyes on that.
Okay. So we got a nomination for Scott for Personnel Liaison. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Erin. Are there any nominations for Personnel Liaison other than Scott? Seeing none, then we'll put Scott's nomination to a vote. All those in favor of Scott Personnel Liaison signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you abstaining?
I'll abstain, just as everybody else did.
So that's four, zero, one, approving for Scott as Personnel Liaison with Scott abstaining. All right, great. So then we can move on to the second item on the regular agenda, and that's an update on the new billing software, and we have Kristin here to discuss that with us.
Yes, unfortunately, Amy was out sick today. So she did give you a recap. We have decided to go with GovSense, which was the one that I was strongly urging towards. She had, or we both sat for a final review where they went through all of her questions in detail. Did kind of a training of a, a, a normal day, not just high level, like the nitty gritty of what she would be doing, which is what she's been wanting for a while. They finally did that, and answered all her questions. She did come up with some of the things that will change and be much better. Just briefly, the fact that it's a unified software, we're all tied together. It's cloud-based, so she can access it from wherever, along with myself. Uh, work orders for the customer items, which is anything meter-related, will be integrated with a work order within that system, along with straight to the financials, which is also cloud-based for the tech technicians. Improved functionality, user-friendliness, the look of it compared to our current software is a world of difference. Uh, payment agreements, she'll be able to automate them. Our current system, it's very clunky, the way you have to do payment agreements. So this, it's very streamlined.
Um, can I ask, what, what do you kind of mean by payment agreements? Is that with individual vendors or something? Customers, oh, yeah.
They can't handle all upfront. We will work out that.
Like a payment plan type thing?
A current month and a chunk of their past. The current month and another chunk of their past will work out in a payment agreement. Eventually will get caught up.
Okay.
Just so you know, going into this meeting, Amy had three pages front and back of questions of processes. She went full bore into it.
She, I, I left. She was two hours additional after I left the meeting.
Wow. I don't, I don't blame her because it's going to be on her shoulders. So she's got to really make sure she knows what she's getting into. So I'm glad to hear that. That's, that's helpful.
Customer reporting, our current software. We have to pay for any customer reporting. She will be able to run around. Auditing in that, anything that's changed or modified will be tracked based on your sign-ins, what is done. And then some added options and convenience for the customers. They'll be able to set up their own monthly payment. Where right now, we, anyone who signed up for automatic payment, we have to go and actually initiate the payment, which we do on the town for everybody. Everyone will have the, set up their own date for automatic. So if they want things coming out on the fifth or whatever, it'll be entirely up to the customer. We're able to do text messaging and emails specific for certain things. We can not only set up, like right now, we can email bills. Everybody, the street is going to be without water. We can specifically do want that street. So, you know, me on crack lane doesn't care what's going on in Babu's it. And that's, we have the ability to put whatever wording we want in that message also. Ron does have the contract in hand. We wanted to wait for this meeting to tell you that we, one, made a decision. Two, we, we'd like to move forward. He wanted to kind of get a final blessing before he signed off on the contract. And it will be, we are doing it in stages, like I have been mentioning all along. We're going to do financials first, then payroll, and then utility billing. So we're not doing everything all at once, and everyone's scrambling. We're going to do it in sections. They will be billing us in sections for the implementation also. Whatever they've done, that's what they're going to bill us for, and so forth. If you have any specific questions, they have asked. If you want to write them, will they, they will answer anything from the Board about the software. I can just take your questions, send it to them, get the responses, and come back. They know that, you know, this is a big deal. It's significant money to, and time to change over basically three software processes that we are combining into one to move forward with. One of the key things is lockbox for us right now is a very manual process with TD Bank. They have the code on invoices, so the amount of money we're spending on manual data entry for lockbox will significantly drop because they will have the barcode on invoices, and that TD Bank will just be able to scan all that with payments. We'll still have the upload like we do now, but we don't have to pay for the manual data entry. So that cost significantly drops. They'll still be onesie twosies here and there, but what they paid and what's on the thing of the remittance doesn't matter. But they just scan those, the whole thing to us, and then we can decide what we want to do with it.
So do you have a, a rough estimate of the total return on investment going to the software?
So right now, we bring, all of the softwares that we use right now, we're currently spending about sixty-nine thousand dollars a year. This will be seventy-six thousand a year. But that's going to add the amount of time it will add to Amy's and her not having to redo things and find workarounds for our current software. Along with the duplication of work will go away because right now, whatever they do in this software, I didn't have to manually enter into this software to manually enter into that software. That all goes away.
I mean, do you have a rough idea of how much time this software is going to have?
I don't, but it probably is significant.
More than, would you say sixty-seven to seventy-six? So nine thousand dollars.
Nine thousand dollars in savings, yes, for our time alone.
So asking for approval, to be honest, I don't feel like we get a whole lot of information. We got, we get a lot of report and opinion, right, and functionality. But normally, when, last time we talked about that, we had, you know, a project cost in front of us, which we don't, I don't have right now in front of me, right? I don't know what the project, you talked about billing in stages. I have no idea what kind of dollar marks we're talking about.
The entire implementation, according to the contract, is a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. We had budgeted two, three years ago, you had given me a hundred and eighty-seven to come out of capital. And then the, the yearly cost has been part of the budget along. I'll actually finally get to use some of it, um, which will be fifty-eight thousand dollars a year for that software. And on average, we were doing about thirty-six thousand in lockbox, again, all manual. I'm thinking that will come down to the very least half is what I factored into the seventy-six. It's probably be significantly more. But I want to be on the cautious side, so seventy-six thousand per year for the software itself.
Significantly more savings, you mean?
Yes. I figured thirty-six to eighteen thousand. I have a feeling it will be a lot less. I just don't want to.
Yeah, no, conservative is.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
During those phases where we do partial rollout, do we need any temporary interfaces or any, any data exchange that's happening? Is there any data created, you know, that needs to be fed for operational purposes in the new modules of, of the new?
That is part of the implementation.
It is.
Yes.
Okay.
And since primarily for financials, we're going from QuickBooks.
Right.
So I'll probably be up and running three days after.
Well, I'm assuming that's the data, you know, migration, once and done. But I'm talking about if, if we continue to use partially older software temporarily because we're rolling the new software out in different stages. You mentioned it earlier, right?
No.
Is there any, any data that needs to be temporarily, you know, synchronized while we use temporarily still old software and not get new software in those areas?
The only thing that, so that payments that we do, we import those from TD Bank now. They will batch whatever TD Bank does to suck it in for the financials for the new software. It's already written to be put out into CUSI. That's part of implementation that they'll automatically do that. For other payments like Venco, which is the bacon interception, that they will, it's already written for CUSI, they will. However, that's written to work for their software again as part of the implementation.
I guess an example is if we don't, if we do finance but not get payroll, then there's financial transactions triggered by payroll, either costing for labor or, you know, the payroll cost, right? Triggered by payroll either costing for labor or um, you know, um, the payroll cost, right? And somehow they need to back into finance. Does that just?
This is a journal entry that I give out, so I would continue to do the journal entry.
Okay, 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 okay. Very good, okay. Okay, and then.
And I've in terms of paying our own payroll taxes, I signed up for. That ID two years ago. So that's ready and set to go for when we start doing that ourselves.
Okay. And then uh. Like um, technology wise, what what database are they?
They're they're on Oracle.
Okay. And uh, do we have any guarantees as far as them being bonded or escrowed as far as, you know? And I I don't know this company. I don't know how large they are. I don't know their history. Are they, you know, one of the biggest players in the market?
They are not.
They are, right. So what happens if they go get into cash flow issues and go belly up and, you know, three years later and. We sit there and we have no maintenance and no migration support and nothing. Is there any kind of bonding or escrowing that they do with, you know, with their product or with, you know?
I don't know that.
Some software company or some smaller company, software companies usually escrows. Um, either their source code for clients to then receive if they ever get into a pickup, right? Um, or they guarantee a certain amount of money that they bonded for. Um, that they can survive another year no matter what happens, so they can help us migrate to another project, stuff like that, right? How do we not get into a dead end with them if they're a smaller company? And the last question, what's the support look like?
The support is. They have um. Not only their support team, but they also have a uh customer some customer support, so customers can go on. And say, hey, I'm trying to do this and other customers can answer. Um. For that's what I'm looking for. They have a customer forum that. I use for a bunch of other stuff, which is fabulous. And if you get stuck, their support system, they have a guarantee. Depending on how the ranking is within um, two hours, eight hours, twenty four hours, depending on what the issue is. Um, they do guarantee their support response.
And it's eastern time, it's not.
It's eastern time.
It is, okay.
You're in Alpharetta, Georgia.
Okay, well, okay.
Any other questions, anyone?
I think I'm good.
Uh, thanks Scott.
No, not right now.
I had a few and I don't know if you can answer all these, but like you said, if you're looking for um, us to just send little questions in, I can do that. But just to go over real quick and you don't have to answer if you don't have a an answer right at the moment, but um. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but did we have like a decision matrix or a list of some all the different items? I don't.
Criteria.
Criteria, yeah, yeah. So that I assume that was.
That is obvious, yes, that was used and. There were. I say three, but it was really. Two, it was GovSense that checked them all off. And then there was one that was just utility billing and one that was just finance. That met all the criteria, but again, the goal was to keep it all together.
Yeah. Good. Um, yeah, so where is the staff located? You answered that. Um. Is some training and support's gonna be available?
Yes.
Um.
And they actually come up here.
Okay.
It'll be sending someone.
And then the next few questions are related to how the bills are actually presented, because I know our current software was certainly limited in customer communication. And that was one of the things that was.
Full control.
Appealed to me was we would be able to put more than one little line item on the.
She will have full control.
Bill.
And she's already redesigned it in her head. The invoice itself.
Cause there could be every couple of months, a different topic that's important that we might want to mention.
Correct.
To certain customers. Now, I wouldn't imagine you could tailor like certain messages to certain customers or anything like that. I don't think we'd need to do that, but.
You can, there's hybrid only customers, you can they can sort those out, you know, if your hydrants cleared during the winter or something.
Yeah, um.
There's a lot more flexibility that she will have.
There. Do you know if it has um. Like flagging of out of range water usage? That capability, because I think our current one sort of does to some extent.
Yeah, she can say if it's this amount, um, I don't know if it's percentage or amount over.
Right.
There is flagging in there.
To to try to find, of course, now that people are getting billed monthly and they get a high bill that's out of whack, they're gonna notice it too, but.
And she also calls those people ahead of them getting their bill currently.
Oh, is that right? Oh, I didn't know that. That's good.
You say you're about to get your bill and we notice it's significantly higher than normal.
Yeah.
And you and here's two things.
Yeah, you're aware of that and what, yeah.
Got an email template too that she's put together, so she can just email them out if if um, if there's an email address.
That's helpful. And I I think we discussed this once and I I wasn't sure if. If we can make this work or not, but when I look at like my electricity bill, it has a usage of the last twelve months. It's like a rolling. Prior twelve months and it just shows a bar graph for each month. Does it have any of that capability? We could show the water usage?
It will on the website. The customer report will have, depending on how much history we bring in.
Yeah.
It will, it can show graphs, um, it can show. Um. Even, you know, people who spike in the summer with irrigation systems, they can put.
Right.
Most likely irrigation system in use and so forth.
Cause in my mind, that's helpful when someone gets a higher than normal bill, they if they look at the usage. Tell, oh yeah, well, I use a lot more waters, that's why, you know, it's.
We have that on there now. No, there's a graph, there's a graph on there that you put the historical trending or camera board, it's tagged as we can see the usage of it.
Is that on the website you're talking about? Okay. All right. That's good. Okay, I wasn't aware of all that. So I think those are all my questions, but it sounds like you've kind of answered them, so.
I have two more, sorry.
Okay.
And I'll be quick, um, assets, asset tracking and like, um, okay, and um, permit tracking as well. So if you if you recall, and actually, there's a third one. So, uh, say, for example, for some of the uh, recent um, apartment buildings, we have permitted without. A certain level of irrigation, so they 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 basically can only irrigate. Um, like their um, their front planners, for example, but they cannot irrigate the the lawn and, you know, surrounding their properties.
That would probably be some of their flagging system. I mean, they have a whole permitting module, but it's for like town permits. This, I think, would use a, they have different flags you can put on things. Um, whether it's the location or the customer, that's you you tell it what the flag means.
Yeah, so my question was basically if we permit, say, for example, a multi-unit property to be, you know, uh, permitted a certain amount of household use and a certain amount of irrigation used. Totaling a certain amount of water use, peak water use, not average, as we learned the hard way. Um, you know, can we flag, for example, that the system is making us aware if they exceed that? For one.
Yeah, the allocation, right?
Right, and it, right, right. If they all of a sudden have somebody come out five years later, three years later and install, you know, five miles of irrigation on this, on their on their property and irrigate away. And grossly exceeding their and their their permit, is the system gonna tell us that? So we can go back and say, hey, we have to up your S D C, right? You're you're um. Whatever.
Good point, yeah, yeah.
So that would be ones, um, and um, the other one was the tiered rate is still, is no problem, okay? And then um, the last one might even be the most expensive, uh, important one. Did they provide references and did we do reference visits? To reference customers?
I have had reference calls.
These meetings, calls. Okay.
Not visits.
So we we have talked to established customers of theirs and.
Yes, we are, we'll be the first in New England. Um.
Of course we are.
We'll be the first in New England, but they are just close from signing Portsmouth, the town of Portsmouth, so.
And have we talked to?
Or singing Portsmouth, whatever we wanna.
Have we talked to Portsmouth why they haven't yet?
I have not.
Might be interesting to ask them why they haven't do yet. Maybe they know something we don't.
They have to because it's not just for water, they they they're doing for water for sewers and they have to get like seven different departments to agree.
Well.
I know. It might simply with the calls and get that feeling for, you know, maybe they maybe they hear something we have.
May maybe they have some questions that we didn't think of. Oh, yeah, that's true.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Sounds very promising.
Mm-hmm. Sounds like hard work that you guys did, so.
And the other thing is that. And for the next two years, I will. Duplicate, but we're also going over to the Hampshire D R A. I don't have to do a one for one anymore. But for anything you guys see, you'll see the old in the new. So as you're used to the old account, so for a while, you'll see both.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Kristen on this?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Wait, anybody, um, how how? I'll dig into the contract.
It is.
Pretty serious, like a multi, many multi-page?
It is a few multi-pages. There is one contract directly with GovSense. There is. Um. One contract directly with Oracle due to our size.
Oh.
And one contract that is is both.
Any desire on the board to have that in the next month's packet to take a look at for any reason or?
The contracts?
Yeah. I mean, no, you guys seem to be more in that world, so that's why I'm just.
I wouldn't mind having, I mean, maybe we can just put them on the SharePoint, you know, if we need them in the.
Oh, yeah, all right.
No, no, we don't need them either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can do that.
That's a lot of printing to do, so.
I just thought you looked at them pretty closely in the past, so if you had that desire, I'm not trying to put work on your plate, but it's. Just in case you weren't thinking of it, if you want, might want to have it there.
Yeah, big sanity check would be good.
Kind of surprised to see. They're back in using Oracle and having a separate contract with them if they're a SaaS provider. I don't understand that, so it'd be good to see.
I've seen that before.
It's due to our size. Um, how many users we require.
Hmm. So they themselves can't handle. You from a customer size standpoint.
They purchase from Oracle. So for us, to the fact we need all seventeen of us to have user access. That going direct Oracle makes it cheaper.
Okay.
Uh.
Cause they're no longer the.
Yeah, I've I've seen that before, actually. Not with Oracle, but with progress.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with the access around. So we'll look at it.
Okay.
It can cause issues in support at times. You know, it can be like.
Like this?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So that would be probably a concern to maybe look at the contract. If there's, there's an issue with the database, right, or with the underlying technologies, are we still looking at GovSense? For us, even if it is potentially caused by their vendor, right?
Okay.
Yeah, so if you want to just upload that to whichever SharePoint that you're gonna use these days and then.
Documents.
Yes, you you give us a email or something to tell us it's there and then we can pull it down and look at it.
Will do.
Awesome, all right. All right, so um, I guess at this point we can move on, um. Jill's sitting in for Ron on the superintendent report, is that correct?
Sorry, don't ask me a question.
Okay.
So for water quality, um, the PFAS pilot, we did the first round of PFAS pilot sampling on April ninth at Wells four and five. Um, we're going to be doing our second round on Thursday, the twenty fourth. Um. I'm sorry, we're gonna be doing a regular scheduled PFAS sampling for on the twenty fourth for media and distribution system. Um, for maintenance, the treatment facilities, uh, as of April fifteenth, Barry Miller has been on site, done it well, seven and eight work, now cleaning and searching of the two wells. Uh, the media regents have been scheduled for two and nine treatment facility on May twenty eighth to remove the media. They'll return on the tenth, replace the media and then go over to four and five and move the media there. And then come back on the twenty, May twenty fourth to replace that media. So within um, less than a month, we'll have both places completely swapped out. Um, the annual flushing of the hydrants started the first week in April. Uh, we started the regular pressure zone with the high pressure service scheduled for the fall. One PFAS water main extensions. Gerard and Mulliken PFAS water main extension project was advertised for bid on April ninth. On April twenty second, we're planning a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting at ten o'clock here at the office. And then the bid opening will be on May fifteenth at two P M. Contract for a time, contract time for substantial completion is seventy five calendar days. And a hundred and five calendar days for final completion, except for paving.
And that's Underwood who's facilitating that, I assume?
Yeah, we're um. Yeah, they're they're facilitating all of this right now.
Yeah, reviewing the R F Ps and.
Yeah.
I mean, the proposals and whatnot.
They're compiling a little bit for that.
Okay.
Uh, former and Mason Road contract documents, including the project manual and drawing have been submitted to D E S for their review. We're just waiting for that. PFAS water main. Extensions, the St. Obain proportion, there's actually two contractors. Um, circumstruction, the they've just finished ten of the la- ten of the la- the last eleven are complete. There's one that's scheduled for May because of scheduling conflict with the homeowner. Um, and then Cardillo and Sons of Plumber. Uh, he's been finishing up on Edward John and Brenda Lane. Falcon, uh, Residence on Falcon was added to the list to receive service. We haven't got a report back on how many they have left to do. In March, uh, first training goes in March, all but two employees received certifications in C P R, A E D and First Aid. We also hosted the the Grand State Rural Water PFAS seminar tour on March twenty sixth, and that was a huge hit. That was rescheduled from. Seventeen or something, but February thirteenth, because we had that huge storm that day and people were coming from all over the state, so it was rescheduled. Um, and then Keith presented at the Water Infrastructure, Keith Pratt from Underwood, presented. Uh, at the Water Infrastructure Workshop on April first, it was the Mermac story. Um, about funding, Ron and I attended as well. Let's just back up for questions. Solar, we did a site walk with CareSarge Energy on April eighth to look at other options or the possibility of combination of options. Once we figure out what our options are, we'll get the pros and cons list together and present it to the board. The salt mitigation committee, we're trying to set up a sodium and chloride reduction stakeholder meeting. Um, Jamie, at the last meeting, Erin, put you on as um, one of the steering committee members. Um, Jamie's out of town until the first week in May, so we're just waiting on him to get his schedule to us, but um, and then we can go from there. And then we, Ron and I both got a voicemail from Homeland Security last Thursday on behalf of the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, he left us a message, said that um. He stated the Army Corps will be conducting an exercise in Mermac, May fifth through the ninth. And we were identified as critical, critical infrastructure. The exercises for water and wastewater for power outage response. Uh, we did reach out to Brandon Kernan at D E S to verify this was legit, a legitimate request. Um, but he wasn't aware of it. After a few calls, he confirmed it is legitimate. This is something the Army Corps is doing. And we haven't received the follow-up call with the rest of the details as yet, but when we do, we will let you all know.
Good. Yeah, Ron mentioned something that to me and I was asked him like. Do we know these guys? Not personally, like. Maybe we should vet it a little bit before someone starts walking through our treatment plant, so that's good to know. Any um, questions on the superintendent report or anything that Jill can bring back to Ron or anything?
That was very, very, very informative. You made one mistake, though. You didn't start out with just a couple of things. Ron's been doing that for the last seven years.
All right. So um, number four on the regular session is the review of um, the various minutes that we have here. The first one. Is uh, March ten. Um. Regular Board of Commissioners meeting, March ten, non-public meeting, the March twenty fifth annual meeting. And if there are no um. Corrections to to provide, we can do these all at once, or if we wanted to have corrections.
I just got one, one quick one that I.
Yeah.
I saw, so on um. On the March tenth, page three, line five. So um. Ron's not doing a training that is a a service that C S A is offering. For M B D, so it's actually the beginnings of a. A review.
That was page four?
Page three, three, line five.
Okay.
So I would just. So I would just. Um, change that to superintendent minor role, uh, participate in a risk assessment with. Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency.
Okay. The other.
It's a free service that's offered, so it's.
Good.
Something that we had signed up for at the.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Good.
That's the only thing I saw.
Okay.
And I just actually saw something, some minor, same page, page three, line twenty, vendor has a typo. Page three, line twenty, scheduled with the vendor.
Oh, yeah, I saw.
Yeah. My spell check doesn't catch that. Is there, is that a valid way to spell a different kind of vendor or something? All right, so I guess if those are a couple of corrections and we can entertain a motion to approve the, um. March ten, twenty, twenty-five minutes as corrected. Anyone still want to make, to make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Motion by Aaron, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any other, uh, last comments, corrections anywhere? All right, all those in favor approving the March ten minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, um, any oppositions or abstentions? One abstention by Wolf, that's four zero one. Um, so let's do the, um, non-public minutes of March tenth. Anyone has any corrections to offer on those? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve. The non-public minutes of March. Tenth.
So moved.
Motion by Scott.
Second.
Second by Aaron, any other questions, comments? It's not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, abstentions, all right, so four zero one abstaining from that one, and then the last one is the March twenty fifth. Uh, annual meeting minutes. Any corrections on those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve those as well.
All right, motion by Scott. They have a second.
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor of approving the annual meeting minutes of March twenty fifth signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, Wolf, four zero one.
Just wasn't there.
Yeah, I know.
But I do apologize for that one more time.
All right. Um, so now we can move on to the action items. And we're looking at the ones particularly for April. Well, the first one on here is the, uh. Item number two, which is the, uh. Yeah, the table of outstanding, um. Service requests from Underwood and Emery Garrett is, it is in this packet at the end of the packet. And, um, if anyone has any questions on that. Bring them up now, not, we can move on.
Change it to July.
Yep, so this is quarterly, right? So, um. Does that say quarterly? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, so, uh, Dawn, if you want to change item number two to, um, July.
Can please.
Thank you. Uh, the next one is, uh, number forty-three, which is monthly, and I think. Mentioned that, the ongoing, um. Salt mitigation meetings, that, this might be a little different, this is the steering committee you're talking about?
No, that's.
Is that gonna be the same, um?
Yeah.
That's for, for calling it now, okay. All right, so we've already discussed that one. Uh, the next one for. April is number sixty-eight. If grant funding is available for artificial recharge, Mitchell Woods, I don't know that. That's the hottest item anymore these days. Cause those are kind of both on hold.
No, we can't really go for grant funding unless there's a commitment by the board that they'll, um, send the money.
Yeah. So I don't know if you want to maybe push this off for six months or something, because I don't think we're gonna be talking about. These two projects probably for a while. You guys are good with that. So where would that put us? Uh, October? Okay, so that would be, uh, number sixty-eight. Dawn, if you want to change that date in the last column to October. Uh, number seventy-nine, the waterline extensions, you already had that in the supervise, su- um. Superintendent report. Number eighty-five, the accounting software that was discussed in detail.
If you want to change that to. Updates in, uh, implementation instead of choosing now.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah.
Updated with.
No going back now.
No going back. Do you actually like to retire that one and put a new one in?
Yeah, I guess we could. So Dawn, you, you might as well, you can essentially copy number eighty-five to a new. Action item number. And I guess just change it to say, um, implementation of, um, financial accounting software or updates on implementation. And you want, when you probably do that monthly at, at this point, or, um.
I probably started in June is when.
All right, we'll just leave it for June, yeah. And then if June comes, if it's gonna be like a monthly thing, we can, we can do that then. All right, so eighty-five is retired and the next one is activated. Uh, the next monthly, two of them we have is, uh, the pilot testing number eighty-eight, which was discussed in the superintendent report. As well as the solar power for number ninety. Um, and actually the same thing for number ninety-five, update on those waterline extensions, so. We can just keep those monthly as they are. Uh, the next one is the updated number ninety-nine, updated distribution hydraulic model. From Underwood to include unaccounted for water.
I actually sent Keith an email today to get the status on that, um. Her back.
Okay. Let's, um. So many they're gonna get back to, so maybe we can bring this up in the next meeting, so if we want to change it, number ninety-nine to. Um, May. And then the last one is the cybersecurity activities, number a hundred, and we have a meeting after this. On that issue, if I'm not mistaken, correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
So, um. Let's change, you, what do you guys think? Cybersecurity, change it to, when's the next one, next update on that?
This actually says quarterly update, um, do you want to change that?
It does, that's right, all right, I didn't notice that. I don't know, do we, we want any more frequency on that one?
Um. I think we can talk about. After, after tonight.
Yeah.
If we want to just review.
Would put it down for May and see.
Check on it in May and see.
All right, so number a hundred, let's move that to May. And I think that does it for the action items. So there's one that we added to that.
One complete, one add.
And you guys don't have any other to offer on there, so we can move on, I guess. Old business. Anybody have any old business?
Lost it.
Well, we'll move on to new business if you, if it comes to you, we'll go back.
Yep.
Anybody have any new business? I don't, I don't have anything, you guys, nothing, great.
I think that's a first.
Yeah, probably.
I literally think that's a first.
What, for me or for all of them?
All of us.
I think you're like twenty-five minutes ahead of schedule, just makes me nervous.
Yeah, yeah, I know, something's gonna break it.
He's just showing off, because we re-elected him as chair.
I know, I know, I know.
I could have done this years ago. But then I wouldn't talk as much. Not coming in?
No. I didn't write it down either, my notes, sorry.
I know, I hate that feeling.
Yeah.
As soon, as soon as we turn Zoom off, it's gonna be like.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
All right, well, seeing no new or old business, um.
Okay, next meeting.
Where are we?
Next meeting.
You sure?
Yeah, it's not important right now, at all.
Okay, it's not timely, they can wait.
Not at all.
All right. All right, so, uh, there are no other, uh, comments, old or new business, I guess the next item is, um, that's just questions from the press and public. And we'll see on the, uh, Zoom agenda or the, uh. Attendees, if there's anybody on there.
No.
Just the, uh, normal people is expected here. All right, so, um, we are going to, um.
Now I remember. Go ahead. You want to give it to me or do you want to write it down and wait?
No, go ahead.
All right.
We're way ahead of schedule, so.
Okay, so the old business was to go back to, um. Yeah, remember on the Warren article, um, two of us opposed. One of the, the issues because of the, the number, and Wolf had given the reason as to why he thought that was there. So when I asked about, like, is there a policy or any procedure?
Uh.
Or something around the. Um. You know, the process of deciding what that number is and how much we're moving. That's, that's what I want to kind of talk about a little bit more about is.
Background on that.
Background and, you know, on, on the surface, what it looks like is, it just looks like we, we might be repeating the same thing year after year is what it sounded like. Um, I think there was data that said there was a year where that wasn't the case, which is good. Um, but do we want to have something in place that says like, this is what we want to move over based on a percentage or based on, you know. What we plan on coming, is, is there like a percentage of something to do there?
It wasn't a percentage, those amounts were actually dictated by the last rate schedule from Underwood.
It's in the C I P.
And. How much money we should be putting away to take care of our main lines that are getting older. That's the whole rate schedule report that they did.
The rate, the rate update, right?
The rate update.
Yeah.
They plan on us having. Our revenue be over our budget. Merely to be able to do eight hundred, two hundred into our C I P or into the trust for our C I P projects.
Yep, and.
I think that's why it was broken up, it was eight hundred over and over again, because when they did the rate study, they took it. And they said, okay, this is what we need over the next course of how many years to meet. What we feel is in the interest, so it was, they broke it up evenly, and that's why I think it's a repeating number, because it was in the rate study that way.
So, we have that rate study, right? I think they're updating it pretty soon.
Have to make, uh, we have to pay, like.
We have to pay.
We have to say, hey, we need another rate study and then they.
I thought we were on like a cycle with them or something.
You, we are not on a cycle, we were thinking every two to three years.
Maybe we were because.
Year would be.
Yeah.
When we. Need one.
It's, what I'm saying is it seemed like they were doing it more frequently because we were in flux with the building of the treatment plants and cost and.
Yes.
We had to step the rates up along to match the cost.
The last one they did, I believe they did it out for five to ten years. Previous to that, you have done. One in twenty eighteen, one in twenty nineteen. One in twenty twenty-two, and then this last one. So because of all that was going on with all the constructions, you wanted to make sure that we were in the right path going forward.
Mm-hmm.
And then with the last one with construction complete, okay, now it's complete. Let's look at our, we know what the loans will be, we know what everything now with loans and C I P, what is our future looking like?
Yeah, so I'm wondering if the future capital. Has changed, because I think we got the lead inventory thing that we didn't, I don't know that we had in the previous.
Did not.
Um.
We also have, there's a few increases that they suggested that we have not done.
Really?
Yes.
So.
Because the surplus was there.
Right, we were holding down what we needed.
Yeah.
For income, so we chose not to do another increase.
Oh, yeah, the rate increases, right.
Right, they were scheduled.
I absolutely remember talking to Keith on the phone about that, he said, no, you guys are raising the rates, this is like a year ago or something, and I'm like. I don't think we are, and he said, no, I think it was recommended, and I'm like.
But I think.
It was.
When we looked at what we brought in for the year, you looked at the numbers and said, I don't think we really need to do it, because we, we made the number. That we couldn't, we needed, um, so it wasn't necessary.
And so, would that be beneficial to, um. Guess, um, provide. Uh, access to that rate study? I, I know you weren't even on the board probably at the time.
Oh.
It is on our website.
It is, but the whole thinking that we just recapped is actually thinking that we didn't really have. That present when we had the discussion either, which goes to show you that stuff like that gets forgotten too, right? So we thought about it and. We came up with good arguments that confirm what we did, so, which translates into, would be nice to have that as a policy, I mean.
What's the rate study?
What's that?
No, that.
Yeah.
So.
The community.
What?
Oh.
Right, but what I'm saying is when we had the discussion here at, like, two meetings ago, we didn't necessarily talk that much about why we had that number. We had spitballed it a little bit, but now, today, we have a much more tangible reason why that number was the number it was.
I think.
So it would be a good idea to put that.
Wasn't here with the firsthand knowledge.
I think I mentioned that.
I think we mentioned the rate study, but.
Yeah.
I think Kristen.
It was a month that I missed.
Yeah, Kristen wasn't here to back it up.
And, and fair enough, but, but still.
I was.
Why not? Why not, why not, you know, do what we say, say what we do, right? If that's our thinking, why, and, and that's our thinking every year, why not make it a policy, right? And that may not be the, the only decision maker in that, there might be other reasons, for example, in general, you know. Um, any, any. Concerns or foresight that the, that the, that the board might want to include in that discussion. But instead of. Right now, we don't have anything to go by, right?
We, we. We have the last.
And I believe it is, they did do it out.
Yeah, but that's only one aspect of that. We had, we had other reasons why we adjusted the number in time. And again, if that's what we're saying we're doing, why not make it, make it formal that that's what we're saying what we're doing?
Based on, yes, our engineering and.
I mean, I would personally feel more comfortable if we wanted to do a different number than what was recommended in the last rate study, I'd feel more comfortable. Having a benefit of an updated rate study.
That true.
You know, so that we know. We're not just. Carrying a number along.
Yep.
That's outdated, but at the same time, without an updated rate study, what else we base it on? It's just kind of like a more of a guess.
I think both are true. I think it would be good to have a policy, why are we picking that number? And then working off of good data.
Yeah.
So do you want us to, um, have them put together a quote for update, update on them while, um, pre-bond?
Well, how long was the last one projected for, you think?
Always, oh, like twenty forty?
Yeah, it was.
They do it out, yes, but I think.
At least ten years.
At least ten years with true data, I mean, they're guesstimating.
Yeah, but I thought they always recommended that it update, like, I don't, I don't think they up, they recommended an update any further out than three years. But at a minimum, they always wanted to do a rate study every three years or so.
When, when we have talked about the, when we sit down for our budget sessions. It's there under, um, capital expenses. And with the recommendation, is it two years, every two years, three years, five years? And we didn't put one in F one twenty-six, because it would have been the third year. So F Y twenty-seven, we could do one unless we take it out of. The trust, whatever they come back with for, but it wasn't, it would not part of this year's or next year's fiscal budget.
It's a, it's a pretty extensive exercise.
Yes, right.
Don't work, if I remember.
Endeavor.
It's not cheap, though.
I mean, Keith actually forwarded me the spreadsheet, and it's got like twelve pages in it that are all linked and it's.
I just feel like we have a lot of stuff up in the air right now, and to do a rate study. Seems like we're gonna be guessing at a lot of stuff, because we have a lot of T V Ds that were waiting.
Yeah.
Other stuff to fall, so I just wouldn't want to spend.
Right, we've got.
Large amount of money that we're not gonna get back any probably new information.
Well, we've got, um, certain milestones due in twenty-six as far as our. Litigation situation. So maybe it makes sense to wait till twenty-seven, I think. But to do a rate study, which is what it is.
Whether I'd be guessing, okay, it's not four years. Be guessing, okay, it's not forty years, you probably want.
Yeah.
Yeah, for like a five-year kind of thing.
But I mean.
Historic, historic anomaly, Keith and his folks usually have an eye on it anyway throughout the year. They have come forth in between and said, hey. We know the next rate study is out, but we had a couple of changes here, and you know, we have some concerns, so.
So I think they do a lesser scope more frequently, but to a full-blown update. Less frequently, I don't do they annually get with you guys?
And then they do the um rate updates. So they have the original rate study, and then they um they update it from there.
And that's, that's when, to help us get the budget squared away, right? Every year, they'll take kind of.
Every year now.
It's not.
No, I think that's a Kristen endeavor.
Oh, alright.
So I mean, you know, we had that, we had the question asked at the annual meeting as well, right? Wolf brought it up. There was a question asked about the, you know, has, has there been any events that we've had to take care of over the last three years? I think the answer was no. If I, I think it's in the notes actually, in the meeting minutes, right? Wendy Thomas had asked.
We haven't had any major CIP for the past three years, because we just finished up building the treatment plants.
Yeah.
Two and I was done last year or finished last year. So now it's focusing on, okay, our mains are fifty years old. Who, what are we doing first?
Yep, so the fact that it, it passed, I mean, voters showed up then, and it. There was really a major issue, it was approved, so it's not that big of a deal. Just be mindful going forward to make sure that we. Talk about the CIP more, or have it and look at it before.
I love it's, if we do put it in FY twenty-seven. That they take a look that we're not having to do a huge jump in a rate.
Yeah.
That it. Smaller ones to potentially with whatever we are upcoming projects may be. I think we'd be helpful so that we're not, because with today's times, we don't want to have a twenty percent increase.
Yeah.
Oh crap, we forgot this.
And.
But we also don't want to have funds, be, you know, we don't want to have a surplus either that's aging, you know, and, and where inflation is just eating up.
Plans. For that trust money. I mean, as you see, the activity of the trusts are.
Yeah, I know, I know what you mean, because you're, inflation's competing with interest rates.
The surplus is planned as part of the rate study.
Right, but what I'm saying is if we are actually, you know, um far ahead of our surplus than versus what it is protected in the rate study for the current year. It would be hard to articulate any reasons why we want to do even a minor rate increase, just because we anticipate a larger one further down the road, right? So I'd be careful with that.
Well, no, I'd rather have to do the rate study so that. We haven't done the recommended ones. Are we still in a good path to not have to do a twenty percent in two years?
Okay, maybe simplify as an app, so if they can do a snapshot of that and, and punch in the biggest numbers. And see how much that's gonna cost us. Maybe that's a two thousand dollar thing that we call, you know, that we do it and call it a day, and that's good enough for now. Maybe they can give us a quote for that instead of doing the big, I think it was like sixteen or twenty thousand, right? I think a big one, yeah, so maybe we don't need that one, but. We can dial the big dials, right, and see what happens.
Yeah, because I remember there were two levels of it. It was just a s- more of a simplistic update versus a full-blown kind of redo that Underwood would do. So. Good question, maybe. If, if they have a proposal for one of the next meetings or something, then.
Just having those that we, we haven't done the recommended. Yeah, once. What's our, what's our new future?
Right. Alright.
And lastly, I do still think it would be nice to have a policy that determines whatever metric it could go by when we determine what we want to put on the, on the Warren article.
I could like to see.
Shouldn't.
If anyone else has one out there.
And, and you know, it, it doesn't have to be a black and white policy either. It can have a fudge, you know, clause, right?
It's kind of just like a board discussion more than like a policy.
To a certain extent, it can.
Policy should be black and white.
Well, the policy itself, yes, but it could, you know.
I think the policy would say, you know, you should look at the rate study, that's the other thing.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Kind of already.
That, but why would make a policy that just tells you what to look at?
Yeah.
Like.
I don't think we want a policy that says, this is the number.
Right.
I think it's gotta be, this number is based on these things.
Yeah, and I think that's what we're saying, but I'm also saying it shouldn't, you know, that, that it's fine for policy to have an additional aspect for criteria of, of criteria of. Other, you know. Planned or expected, you know. Investments that are needed or repairs that are needed, right? So. Let me check up.
Yeah, because certainly the CIP gets, falls into play there, because if we've got more projects depending on when they're scheduled for and everything. Um you know, the, the other thing I'm thinking too is if we don't. Raise revenues and, and put them in the reserve funds, and then we go and take a bond out. The way that gets paid back is substantially more money upfront in the first several years than in the last several years. You know, and I don't know how that gets factored into. Comparing against putting money in a reserve account and having interest on it. That's. A little complicated.
How healthy is the reserve?
Right.
Versus, do you have to do a bond for any major destruction?
Yeah.
Coming down the line soon.
I'm not sure, just comparing interest rates versus inflation rates is a direct correlation in that case, you know? Because it's all front-loaded, the mortgage is all front-loaded. So um. Anyway, yeah, so if we could at least have that, maybe a proposal for that for the next meeting and, and I think whatever that looks like. If we want to go ahead with a policy or something. You know, we can talk about that too at the next meeting.
True.
That's something we might want on the agenda then, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. It's timely and, alright. Alright, are we good then? Um I guess um. We're uh at this point going to uh go into non-public session. Um so uh we're gonna, we're going to um. Leave the audience behind, but at this point, uh we want to take a motion for going into non-public. I think we need to do that, right?
Yeah, and I think there's an RSA that we're supposed to quote.
See that on here, but.
I think what will work is ninety-one A colon three two I, consideration of matters relating to the preparation for. And the carrying out of emergency functions.
That sounds good.
I make that motion.
Does anybody second that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Scott. Alright, all those in favor of going into non-public for that RSA, signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, thanks. Alright, so this is the end of the regular meeting, and um the next meeting uh is May nineteenth. Thank you.